Again, apologize for the delay. Appreciate your patience. Good evening. Welcome to the July 23 special study meeting for the Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission. The roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city's attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carl O'Wartman Associates. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission, not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, BlackBerrys, PDAs, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting please be either silenced or put in the turn-off mode. And we'll ask that there are a lot of people tonight, I suppose, a lot of people want to talk. Please try to keep your remarks brief, and if you're saying the same thing that someone else has said, we'd appreciate it either make it very brief or just let someone, the spokesperson, speak for you. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Kathy, real call?
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Hudson? Mr. Kempin?
Here.
Mr. Krent?
Here.
Mr. Zenzika?
Here.
Mr. Shevki?
Mr. Schultz?
Here.
Mr. Stratt?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Here.
All right, approval of the agenda. Mr. Schultz?
Move the agenda as prepared, sir.
I'll second.
Mr. Krent, seconds?
Mr. Kempin?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Zenzika?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
All right, item number three, the minutes of the July 9, 2013 regular meeting. Everyone's had a chance to review it. Any questions or comments or motions? Yes, Mr. Edmonds?
Item number seven of the minutes, I'd like to have that reworded to say Mr. Edmonds said he lives within close proximity of the proposed development and announced that he would recuse himself from the discussion. I didn't ask to be recused. Thank you. But with that, I approve the minutes as amended.
All right. Do I have a second for that? Mr. Stratt?
Mr. Kempin?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Zenzika?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes. Kathy, did you get that amendment? Did you get it all? Okay, all right. Item number four, public comment. This is for items that are not on the agenda tonight. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? All right, item number five, zoning board of appeals report.
We had just one item. It was, you know, I'm just good, I'm sorry, but I can't recall it at this time, and it was very brief. We had a record meeting, it was over nineteen minutes. It was, it was, I'll think of it later, I'm sorry, but it was a very fast meeting, but we did have a meeting.
And was the item approved?
It was approved.
All right. Okay, thank you. The Downtown Development Authority, DDA, report, item number six. Mr. Savadon?
I was gonna report, excuse me, I was gonna report on last week's DDA meeting. It was postponed till tomorrow morning, so I got nothing.
Moving on to item number seven, how about a planning and zoning report?
Planning and zoning report, I was gonna briefly report on those of you who've been along Big Beaver recently, so you've seen some activity. The Big Beaver Center PUD between Alpine and McClure is close to being completed. They're wrapping up, it's fully leased. They're working with their tenants on finishing interior spaces. The former Christensen Building, another Arch and Jonah property, the building has been demolished and there's construction ongoing there. And the Gallery of Troy, you'll recall, it's a Bonefish, Carrabba's, and Retail Center. That's, construction's underway there as well. So some activity along Big Beaver, kind of exciting.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Krent.
The brain matter guy rolling here. Just wanted to let you know that what we approved was a four-foot variance. The existing building was six feet from a property line. The zoning had changed since that building was constructed and they increased to ten-foot yard setback. So the approval was to continue that building line from the old building, which didn't conform to the new ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Krent. All right, item number eight, this is a public hearing, it's a special use and preliminary site plan review, file number SU409. Proposed Faith Lutheran Church, west side of Dequinder, north of Big Beaver, 37635 Dequinder, section 24, currently zoned R1D, one-family residential district.
Yes, thank you. Good evening to the Planning Commission. The first item tonight is a special use application for Faith Lutheran Church, which is located on Dequinder, just north of Big Beaver. The applicant is seeking a special use approval and site plan approval for three changes to their site. The first proposed change is a 4,000-square-foot addition to their youth center, which actually fronts on Dequinder. The second proposed change is a new 3,000-square-foot indoor recreation building. And the third proposed site change is two volleyball courts, two soccer fields, two baseball fields, and one football field to their site. It should know that the indoor recreation center and the sports field are located along the northern property line. This is located in a parcel that was recently acquired by the church. The applicant does not propose any changes to the existing worship facility and associated buildings, and they do not propose any change to the parking lot with access and circulation. The applicant notes that the use of the fields will be limited to members of the church only. However, the city really cannot verify that or monitor that moving into the future. In addition, the applicant notes that the use of the field will be used on Saturdays from 9:00 to 6:00 for games, and throughout the week from 3:00 to 9:00 in the evening and used for preschool recesses during the week. The location of the fields do meet all setback requirements in addition to the proposed changes to the youth center and the recreation building. And the applicant notes that the use of the fields will not occur during worship hours so that the existing 764 parking lot, space parking lot should be sufficient for the use of the site. We do note that the location of the fields is located in the area that's heavily wooded, and this includes about 165-foot buffer from the adjacent single-family property to the north. The applicant proposed to mitigate the concerns of buffering by meeting the requirement to screen with a six-foot-high concrete masonry wall and evergreen trees at 30-foot intervals. We do note that the applicant has submitted a tree inventory. The inventory is not completed, only lists the types of trees, does not list the size or quality of the trees. However, the applicant does confirm that most of the trees are silver maples, which are a prohibited species in the ordinance. This does not mean that we recommend removal of those trees, just this simply means that new trees of that variety cannot be planted within the city boundaries. So while these trees might not be a desired species, they are mature, they do provide buffering, and they really do provide character for the adjacent Majestic Drive just to the north. We would like the Planning Commission to consider, based on input from both the applicant as well as adjacent neighbors, the consideration of a tree preservation of some sort of a collar, like collar around the property. This could be a 25- to 30-foot buffer in addition to what's being proposed. We feel that the preservation of these trees would greatly buffer and appease some of the concerns that we've heard from adjacent neighbors to the north. I just do want to note the applicant does not plan on lighting any of the fields. However, if they do plan on lighting the fields in the future, this will require an amendment to the special use and will have to come back before the Planning Commission at a future date. We have not prepared findings for this application. We would really like to listen to the input of the Planning Commission as well as adjacent neighbors in regard to how they want to address mitigation of the tree preservation in the buffer moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Savadon, do you have a comment?
Not a question, but a comment. We got, we received three letters in opposition to the project. Those were provided to the Planning Commission members. We also received some correspondence from the applicant that I distributed to the Planning Commission via email. It was a list of the tree species on the property. It is not a tree inventory per se, it's simply a list of the species of trees. The applicant has indicated they do wish, as Mr. Carlisle stated, they do wish to clearcut, and this is a list of the types, the species of trees on the property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Mr. Edmonds?
Have we ever, have we ever approved like an environmental preservation area? Is that a possibility also under this type of zoning? To delete the existing trees? Some of the existing trees, say a 30-foot buffer or something. Could that be an environmental preservation area?
An environmental preservation area?
EP, yeah, right.
You mean change the zoning district for that?
Yeah.
I suppose theoretically we could, but we could, I mean, Laurie's here, we could, if we conditioned approval, special use approval on it, on a buffer, that would carry similar clout. Laurie, do you have anything to add to that?
If it is a rezoning, obviously, you know, you'd have to go through the whole process and you'd have to define what that boundary was. And Mr. Savadon is correct in that, you know, this would also be binding on all subsequent property owners as well.
Any other questions, Mr. Carlisle or staff? Yes, Mr. Krent?
This is B for staff. The, our ordinance is right now, would it allow just the six-foot barrier wall and the trees? Would that pass muster as far as meeting the ordinance requirements? In other words, what they've proposed?
Yeah, I can address this. Because of the differentiation between the different land uses, they're required to plant, by ordinance, 10-foot-on-center evergreens. However, the Planning Commission can approve a 30-foot-on-center with a wall, but that has to be approval by the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Mr. Schultz?
If we were to request a 25- or 30-foot buffer that the trees were not to be removed from, would that eliminate the need for the six-foot barrier wall? Or would they still have to install a six-foot barrier wall and destroy a bunch of trees to do that?
I believe that's it. Ben, you can feel free to jump in, that would be at the discretion of the Planning Commission.
Yeah, the, if they preserve, our feeling is if they pervert, excuse me, they preserve a 25- to 30-foot buffer that would meet the screen requirements. If it's the desire of the Planning Commission to preserve that, the inclusion of the six-foot wall would greatly impact that ability to preserve that buffer. So it's kind of an either-or. Either they preserve the trees with the 30-foot buffer, or they really take them down and put the wall up with combination of landscaping, and that's really a decision of the Planning Commission with input from residents and the property owner.
That's why I asked the question.
To be clear, the preservation of the trees would be countable towards meeting the landscape requirements for the two, for the two abutting uses?
Any other questions? Is a petitioner here tonight? Would you like to step forward, please? Please sign in, introduce yourself.
I have signed in. My name is Joe Casigli, I'm representing Faith Lutheran Church.
All right, was there anything you'd like to add to the comments that the?
No, I appreciate the opportunity to address the Planning Commission this evening, and you certainly have reviewed our plan. Part of the desire that we have for the screen wall is not only to provide a physical barrier, which the trees admittedly do right now, but we, knowing that this is going to be utilized primarily by young kids and families, we're very concerned about making sure that the kids themselves stay physically on our property during the activity. You'll note that on our southern and western boundaries, we already have a similar screen wall in place that borders the property of the church. We would propose to continue that existing style of boundary around the entire perimeter of the property, that allowing us to have a continuity around the perimeter, but also especially to help to keep the kids on the fields where they're supposed to be, not allowing them to wander into adjacent property or into other people's yards.
Do you know if there's a fence now on the northern side of this, this trees right on the property line?
There is, a number of residents do have fences on that property. There is not one continuous fence that runs along that northern border.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? All right, if you could have a seat, open the public hearing. If there's anyone that wants to speak on this matter, please step forward, sign in, introduce yourself.
I guess I'm already signed in. My name is Richard Belts. I'm actually a resident on Kingsbury Drive, which is a fair distance from this particular plant. I'm here, however, representing my son, who unfortunately has had to be out of town today on business. I'm also, I guess, representing his neighbor, Mike Bombay. They are located on the dead end of Auburn Drive. They're, if you look at your plan, the closest residences to this proposal. They both have side yard configurations relative to the proposed masonry fence, whereas as you look through the remainder of the neighborhood, typically you have rear yard exposure and a good deal more distance between the fence or the masonry wall and the residences. Our concern, and I was glad to hear about a 30-foot of buffer, is that I think the proposed masonry wall would be about, oh, eight or 10 foot from my son's side yard. And I think if I can eyeball it correctly from the plan and from his, where Auburn dead ends, I think the wall would go right through a pretty nice spruce tree that I think is actually on his property but extends over into the other area. Both my son, who's been there 14 years, and his neighbor have been maintaining an area that is now church property, before that it was owned by an individual, and been mowing it some 30 feet or so. And you can see in your plan, there's a tree line that's indicated, and that pretty well reflects the area that they've been maintaining, actually going back to when the subdivision was originally built out in the early '70s. So again, there's been rather continuous maintenance of that area abutting their property, and they use that as a buffer to the woods and the trees and all those critters that like to make a home there. What I'm proposing, and again, I had an opportunity with my son to meet with Reverend Joe and discuss setting the masonry wall back and providing some additional landscaping. Unfortunately, he was not able to really agree to doing that. I've since taken a piece of paper and marked up what I think is a reasonable solution, which is to cut the masonry wall back, perhaps at a 45-degree angle, about 20 foot, and allow that, along with landscaping on both sides of the wall, to buffer that neighborhood and those two homes. I've got a sketch here, and I apologize for the, I'm not a landscape architect or an architect, I'm more of an engineer, but I'd like to present that.
Mr. Savadon?
And I've got some photos here, too, that show the existing conditions of that area. And also, I threw in a couple of other photographs which reflect screening around an office building that my daughter's located on at Square Lake and John Iron Troy. And in that case, they've got a berm, which we would love to see, and rather extensive plantings. I understand that's expensive, and I understand it is a maintenance element perhaps the church doesn't want to get into. However, again, my suggestion is that we scale that wall back at hopefully about a 45-degree angle. It would involve four additional fencing sections in order to do that, and then continue it along, but also have plantings on both sides of the wall so that it's softened. It's a fairly harsh element in a residential neighborhood. And I think the fact that the street dead ends the way it does reflects that at the time the subdivision was planted, clearly there was thought that the street would be extended through. Otherwise, we'd see a nice cul-de-sac, and we'd have a lot less in the way of maintenance problems for refuse and snow and all types of city services on that dead-end street. So my suggestion again would be that that wall has a contingency. The Plan Commission, if they approve the special land use permit and the site plan, that that wall be further back on the property. I think 20, certainly 30 foot would be wonderful, but I think 20 foot would give enough room to do some plantings there and screen the wall a little bit and soften that whole environment. I would also recommend that any plantings not be in a straight line, as kind of indicated here. I think you can cluster some plantings, make it a little more interesting, more agreeable. And also, I think you can vary the species a little bit so that, again, you're not dealing with a single element there that can be a problem, and it's just not as interesting or conducive to a residential neighborhood. So with that, I would thank you, and I thank you for your consideration this evening.
Are there any questions for this gentleman? I don't know if you can necessarily speak for your son, but there's been some discussion whether it's a screen wall or whether it's leaving 25 or 30 foot of the existing trees. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I actually, I don't have a problem with a screening wall, and I understand the security element there. I think my issue is with the placement of the wall, and whether or not the wall itself is screened appropriately on both sides with vegetation that kind of breaks it up and softens it. If we can accomplish that, and I wish we had a landscape plan that would, you know, reflect the species and reflect the elements that are proposed to be used, but I think there's ways to work that out, hopefully. So no, I'm not diametrically opposed, I mean, I'd love to have the berm and the heavy plantings, but I'm also realistic enough to understand that that may be an imposition on your petitioner, and I, I'm not trying to do that, I'm trying to find a way that we can lessen the impact on the neighborhood and still provide, allow him to have really full utility of the site as he's proposing.
Yes, Mr. Edmonds?
Just a clarification, you said the berm. I don't think anybody's proposing it.
No, the berm is, in the photos I submitted, it's of another site where my daughter's office building is, and that simply isn't, you know, if all things were possible, that's what I would prefer to see. I think realistically, I'm probably asking for too much. On the other hand, a berm would be nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman? Oh, Mr. Schultz? Not a question. Based on the number of people that are here tonight, could we please limit to not more than five minutes per speaker, please? Sure. Or we're going to be here till tomorrow.
I'll keep it less than five minutes. I agree with a lot of what this gentleman said. Kevin Geier? Did you sign in, Kevin? I did sign in. Okay. I live on Majestic Court, and I'm here with many of my neighbors that back up to this wooded area that we're discussing tonight. So what we look out at is, most of us has fence lines, beautiful trees, overhang. What I don't want to see is a six-foot-high gray wall. The 25- to 30-foot barrier would be, I think, a good way to go. If they're worried about people wandering off into the woods, they can put in a small wall on their, on that side. I think that would preserve a lot of the natural barrier we have. What they're proposing with, what I've read in their prints, is a six-foot wall with trees covering that wall for them, and everything ripped out on our side. Our neighbors all maintain their lawns, I cut into the woods, overhang, take care of it. Tree falls, I chop it down and use it for firewoods. So I think the idea of the 25- to 30-foot, preserving the natural area, we have a family of four deer living there this summer, we've seen. Hawks, owls, everything. So I think that would provide an acceptable. So, I think that would provide an acceptable and better answer than a six-foot wall staring into.
All right, thank you.
They're already signed in. Carol Keiger. I'm on 37761 Dequender. I don't, on that plan, it doesn't look to me like that wall is even going to come up by my property. Maybe I'm not interpreting right, but I think I should get a wall. I agree with Mr. Belts that they should have, the wall should be set back, and we should have landscaping on both sides. It doesn't have to be landscaping, just leave the trees that are there. I mean, nobody maintains it now anyway, so why not just leave the trees that are there? And I'm all for a wall because yesterday, they had kids out there playing, and they also had some guy screaming and blowing a whistle, and it was really loud. And there's got to be some kind of sound-absorbing wall, because multiply that by six or seven on all these fields. That's going to be really, really, really loud. Now, I'm going to move, but I don't know who's going to buy my property if, you know, we've got all these kids playing in these fields screaming. That's really disruptive. So, and I don't see on that, doesn't look like that wall is coming up by my property, even.
Let's see if I can.
I mean, I couldn't really tell. I looked on the website, but it doesn't look like it is.
It doesn't appear that the wall extends to the road.
Mr. Savin, should it extend down? I mean, it is residential property.
We're talking about, do you live?
I'm right on Dequender.
On Dequender, excuse me.
37761 Dequender. My yard is 260 feet deep.
What did you say your address is, ma'am? 37?
37761.
61, that's the house.
For code requirement, the treatment should continue all the way to and through this, this lease property. It should go all the way to Dequender. So, if the plan is not, does not show the wall, whatever treatment's used in the rest of the site, it should continue all the way to Dequender.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. You know, I, can I give you a copy of my?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to talk to this item, speak to this item?
Hello, my name is Charles Snell. I live at 2987 Winter. That's right in the Big Beaver subdivision. I'm in agreement with the church's current proposal as it meets all of the requirements by the city. I've just had a development directly behind me of a nice wooded lot, and there was no preservation of trees in those, in that subdivision, which we're sadly disappointed by. But if you can approve a subdivision going in without preservation, I would imagine that you can prove this that meets all of your current requirements, the six-foot barrier wall and the 30-foot on center trees. I can understand how the residents want trees preserved as a buffer. I did, too, on the subdivision behind me, but it didn't meet the necessary requirements to do that, so they don't get saved. Same thing here. And trees can't be planted on somebody else's property. They have to plant it on their property, so they can't really come into somebody else's yard and start planting trees as a border for them on their property, liability risks and so forth. So, in my opinion, it should be approved as being presented right now, right here, as it meets all of the city's requirements. And to do, make them do something different would, could cause undue harm, you know, financially, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak to this item?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. I signed in, Mike Bombay, 3370 Auburn Drive. I'm one of the neighbors directly to the north. The proposed fence would be about eight to 10 feet from my foundation or whatever, so I think it would adversely impact probably some property value, having, you know, it's nice natural trees, there's deer walking by. It's nice looking there, and so having the brick wall that close would probably be, I wouldn't prefer that, but I'm a reasonable guy. I mean, if the church want the property, they should be able to develop it, you know, hey, no one's against having kids having fun on a field or whatever, and playing games and stuff like that, so I'm all, you know, for that. I agree with David Belts' father, Richard, that came up earlier with his alternate proposal. If we go with the wall, if we could put it 30 feet back, or maybe what someone else suggested, maybe a 20, 30 foot and leave the trees. I'm open to both those. Just, you know, having a brick wall seven to 10 feet off our foundation. I mean, I, you know, I don't know who developed it back in the 70, or 1973 when they built those homes, but if you look on the map there, we're sideways, you know, it's sideways facing, and you don't have the backdrop. If you look at the other homes, they at least have 30 to 50 feet. We would have that, seven to 10 feet, and if they put it that way, we couldn't even plant, you know, some type of shrubbery or anything. You could barely, you wouldn't even be able to grow grass or anything. So, if they're, you know, I'm reasonable. I'm open to ideas. I just don't think the seven, the six-foot wall, seven to 10 feet from my foundation is probably the best alternative for my property values. But I'm willing to go with what the consensus of the folks here.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Christina Belts. I'm at the 3373 Auburn Drive, and that was my father-in-law speaking for myself and my husband. One thing that wasn't mentioned that I do want to add is, in the 13 years that we've lived there, in the summer times and sometimes during the year, there are concerts or other things that go on at Faith Lutheran Church that, even with the trees, we can hear in our house. And there was on occasion where we actually had pictures fall off the wall. It's been a little quieter in the past year, but I do want, I think with the trees there, it helps buffer some of the sound. And I'm imagining with the sports fields there, it's going to be even louder. So, I did want to add that there. We would like the trees to remain, and if not the trees, the berms in the wall to be back at least 30 feet.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the table.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Schultz.
If I could just make one comment. The gentleman came up and talked about the subdivision that recently went in, and we didn't provide a buffer there. I think it's incumbent on us to explain that there are differences between site plan approval procedures. If someone is coming in strictly for a site plan approval and they meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance, we cannot extract or request anything over and above the zoning ordinance. However, this is a special use and a site plan, and the Planning Commission does have some additional powers to request accommodations if there is a special use involved. So, there's a difference between simply a subdivision being site plan approved and something like this which is being special use and site plan approved.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Sanzico. I'd like to ask the petitioner, had you proposed to clearcut right to the wall if you were to build the wall at that point?
Yes, we did propose to clearcut the property and then put the wall in right up to the, essentially on our side of the property line, but within a foot or so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Crick?
Because this is a special, special use approval, I think we can be a little more creative for this barrier between the two. I just wanted to ask staff, what, are we restricted as far as materials for that wall? Does it have to be masonry? Does it have to be, you know, is it, can it be chain-link fence?
Does it have to be masonry?
Right.
No, it does not have to be masonry. It has to meet the screen requirement, so there has to be a combination of landscaping. If they're not going to do a masonry wall, it has to, landscaping has to meet the screen requirement.
In that, in that case, I want to continue. There's, it seems like there's two requirements here. One is to prevent the people occupying the church property from wandering into the residential area. I think a chain-link fence could provide that physical barrier, but then we need a visible screening, and I think landscaping, trees could do that job, and also add as a sound buffer between the two, a sound, something to deaden the sound coming from the church area. So, and I liked Mr. Belts' idea of, I think it was Mr. Belts, but maybe it was another person that came up, of putting that barrier, the physical wall being our fence, in the middle of the landscaping. In other words, have the landscaping on either side so that both sides, the residents and the church, see trees, and yet it creates a sound deadening area. It keeps the sound deadening as much as we can with the existing foliage and maybe additional foliage, additional trees, and yet it does provide the security of a barrier so kids don't wander in. That's my thoughts.
Thank you. Mr. Stratt?
I agree. There are two, two conditions here that we have to consider. One is sound. Of course, it's going to probably be a lot worse as far as the sound because of the activities with the whistles and everything else. But actually, the sound barrier, mass is what really prevents the sound from penetrating, and vegetation is not going to do the job. So, I really am supportive of the wall, and I really appreciate the way that they came up with the pylons, which are all concrete, which means they don't have footings that they have to continuously cut across and disturb all the existing vegetation that's there, which I think I compliment you on that. I think that's great. Then they put the precast panels in between, and they slide them in, so they're preserving as much as they can. I don't know what color you're looking at, but one of the key things is, I'd hate to see a bright orange or anything like that. Should be as, as green or as, I just don't know what color, but I'm saying something that'll blend in with the actual vegetation, so even during the winter time, it's not an eyesore as much as the other. I'm not sure which way I would go as far as the placement of it, whether I'd ask for, you know, some landscaping in front or not. I know that a lot of the neighbors, I mean, in all due fairness, they've had this property that they've really extended, and they've been mowing and taking advantage of, even though it's not theirs. And I don't know how much vegetation is left along those lines for them to plant additional landscaping. But again, maybe some landscaping could be provided in front of the wall for the benefit of the residents, but there's certainly, I would definitely want to put a wall up. I mean, that would be, because I'm concerned about the whistling and the whistles, and you know there's going to be all kinds of activities that are going to be there.
Mr. Sanzico. Yeah, I'm concerned. I think both should be, quite honestly, the wall and the landscape buffer. And really, what I'd like to see is a tree plan, to see a tree survey, to see what type of trees are there. And I don't believe you have to have a wall perfectly on the property line. You could be under the wall around to save any of the species, the trees that are really worth saving. So, it would be my intent to have both, a wall and a landscape berm to protect the homes.
Laurie, I have a question for you. There's been several comments made about taking the wall off of the property line, pushing it further south onto the petitioner's property. Are they still not required to maintain the property, the north side of the wall?
Yes.
I've never seen this done before, and I don't know if you have, or if it's problematic, when you actually separate yourself from your property with a wall.
We do have that situation, and there have been some concerns raised about how you do maintain that. Obviously, they'd have to work out some kind of an arrangement to make sure that that did get maintained if it were, in fact, if there is a gap between the property line and the, and the wall.
Right, right. Mr. Schultz?
I'm not going to be able to support a wall offset from the property line. I, basically, if we tell them to put a wall 15 or 20 feet in from the property line, we're basically asking the church to give 15 or 20 feet of their property to the lots next door, and I will not support that. The other concern is if we were to request that 25 feet of the existing vegetation be left, the people who have encroached through the years and have mowed area are going to end up with no landscaping. They're going to end up with grass and nothing else. So, I don't know what the solution is, but I won't support a fence offset from the property line, and I would prefer to see trees.
Any other comments?
Sure.
Mr. Stratt?
Go ahead. Well, I was just going to say, it looks like, and I was going to ask the petitioner, is that a drainage line that you got along the backside of that or the north side there? Is that what that is?
Nathan Robinson, Horizon Engineering. Yes, that's some sort of drainage line. We haven't designed that yet, but we will be required to drain the grass area. And that, well, I want to continue with that, but does that answer your question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. That partially ties in with some of the tree preservation concerns. Regarding the wall, the wall is an absolute necessity for the church. We have to have that physical barrier, and I have to completely agree with Mr. Schultz's comments regarding the location of the wall. It needs to be on the property line, so I won't speak any further on that. I think that's pretty obvious. But with regards to tree preservation, there is going to be some disturbance for construction purposes. We obviously have a certain amount of area we need to clear for the fields themselves. We can't have trees right up against the edge of the fields for safety for the children running around. We need some type of a distance there. Add to that grading activities, drainage activities. The construction of the wall, it is a piers wall, so there will be minimal disturbance because they are just post-footings. It's not a continual trench, but we will still need, these piers are only eight to 10 foot on center, so we will need to get equipment in there to install it. So, there will be some disturbance due to grading activities, drainage, construction equipment. So, we're taking this potential area to preserve trees, and it just keeps getting narrowed based on the activities that need to occur in this location. And I haven't seen it in the city of Troy, because obviously there, we all know that there aren't tree preservation requirements. But I've seen in other municipalities that I do work for, when you have a wooded area and you go in there and a developer is required to preserve a bank of trees, 50 foot, 20 foot, whatever it is, you end up with very tall, narrow trees. They have no understory branches, no understory foliage, all the foliage is at the top, not the most desirable visual appeal as you would get with trees that would be on the perimeter or individual. And that also opens up for the trees to be damaged with heavier storms. You take away all the trees that are essentially buffering these preserved trees, it opens up for heavier storm events, wind, whatever trees would be preserved, what percentage will end up becoming blown over or damaged and then cut down and removed. That's obviously a big variable, but considering that most of these trees are silver maples, the reason why, and I didn't write the ordinance, but just in my knowledge of silver maples, one of the reasons why they're considered a prohibited species or a nuisance tree is because they are very susceptible to storm damage. So, 80% of these trees or more are silver maples. And based on all of the, our, these findings, we didn't really feel that it was worthwhile to save arrow trees. And on top of that, when we're talking about sound deadening, obviously, as Mr. Stratt has mentioned, the wall helps for that purpose, but the wall also helps for screening and opacity. Granted, we have some evergreen plantings, they're 30 feet on center. We would be willing to increase the amount of trees, plant them closer together to provide more of a screening. Eventually, those trees are going to grow, and they'll be well above the six-foot mark, so they will not only provide additional screening, but potentially some additional sound ending. If the wall wasn't there, if we didn't have the evergreen trees, if we preserved simply a greenbelt of existing deciduous trees, that doesn't provide any sound deadening whatsoever, doesn't provide any screening whatsoever, because again, these are sticks, basically. All the foliage is up in the air. So, you're going to be able to see right through these trees, here right through these trees. Granted, on the north side of this wooded area, from the resident's view, there's probably some vegetation growing because it's on the edge of the woods, but I'm certain that whatever line would be cut, the cutoff point of the tree preservation area, it's going to be just sticks, essentially. So, that, that's where we were coming from in our desire to clear the area and get, get the screen wall up, provide some additional plantings.
Well, as a follow-up to that, I think that the setback that you have for the fields, approximately fifty feet, is that correct?
Yes.
I thought I saw it somewhere on your drawing. And you got it almost centered. I mean, why, why couldn't it be closer to the field and preserve as much of the vegetation as you possibly can? Because you know you're going to trench that. You're going to level it all off, and it's going to be gone. And, you know, I, I really want to, I, I know, whatever they are, silver maples, and as you indicated, it's a ground cover. That's the important thing, is that there is ground cover. And I understand, you know, you're going to go with ten foot on center with your poles, but you're not going to necessarily destroy all the roots of all the trees either by doing that. So, I appreciate what you've done, and hopefully you're going to go with good color, but I, I don't like the idea of having you going down, right down the center with that. I think there's, I, I know this is not final, but I would hope that you use some creativity in stormwater management. As you know, I'm very, very much in favor of, and I bring it up all the time. I don't know that you have to do that. I just, I didn't look at the topo. I'm not going to second-guess you and try to design it for you, but I'm just, tell me what I'd be looking for. It's preservation of all that vegetation, even if it's on the other side of the fence itself. It's still acting as a buffer visually for all the neighbors, so.
Yes, Mr. Kempin.
Yeah, it was going to be my comments as well. Just providing the trees does do a lot for the aesthetics of the area. I know you have, it looks like you're maintaining a lot of landscaping in the front, facing, facing the main road there, but, I mean, we're getting pretty heavy usage here. Another thought I had as well, what if this was just a bare open lot right now? I think we'd be having a completely different discussion, and everybody would be applauding the fact that you're bringing in basically a park setting into this environment. So, I mean, I'm trying to balance that. You know, having property that is aesthetically beautiful makes it a little bit more of a challenge when you come here before the public and everyone else for approvals. You know, and that kind of, you know, thought, because it comes up quite regularly. The people of Troy really love the trees that we have here, and it is important to maintain that aesthetics for our community. But we're also providing a service for, at least people of the church community, getting them out and getting them, you know, more outside athletic activity. So, that's also very important. So, this is a tough, tough thing to balance, the needs of the congregation and the needs of the community and surroundings. You know, I would like to see some trees put in there substantially more, more than the thirty-foot on centers, but in general, I think I could agree with it.
What do you envision happening if you clearcut this property and you put the fence or this, this green wall along your property line? What do you see happening in that last fifty feet that's not a playfield? Do you see kids running around and yelling back there as well?
They're children, I'm sure as well. That's not, that's not going to be the object, the objective, obviously, but you know what's going to happen.
Well, the point-
Balls, balls are going to leave the field.
Absolutely.
But as far as like a continued type of a use, there's going to be people watching these events. So, I'm sure that as much as we would like the people to be maybe in the distance between the field and parking lot, nobody wants to be sitting on the grass in front of cars, parked cars, so I would have to imagine some of the spectators may be within that fifty-foot greenbelt. I don't know if that's necessarily in conflict with the ordinance in terms of the fifty-foot setback. That was one of those, fifty-foot setback generally applies to improvements in structures in the fields. You know, it's a paint stripe. But we were advised to maintain that fifty-foot setback, at least the physical play activity where the kids are running around, limit that, limit that to the fifty-foot setback, so.
You commented earlier that the church needed this screen wall. Was there some information that we haven't heard yet, why they needed?
No, just purely safety, keep, keeping the kids on the church property and not wandering into the neighbors. And likewise, the neighbors from wandering onto the church property, what happens after hours? What happens during play if somebody has a dog in their backyard? Granted, some of the neighbors have fences, but not everybody. And, and they own the fences. Fences could become damaged, could be removed. We have no control over the fences.
Mr. Edmonds.
Do you envision that on these playfields, you're going to have risers and bleachers kind of thing?
There's paint stripes. That's it. No, no paint stripes. There's no permanent features whatsoever. If it's a, I'm not a sports person, but if there's any type of activity, soccer, baseball, I mean, if there's like a, a backstop or a goal or anything typical of a sports event, it's removable. They bring it out for the, for the game. There's, people are going to have to sit on the grass. There's no seeding. It's, these items are brought out during play when it's done. That's what the recreation building is, part of, part of its primary use is to store all of this equipment, so that it's not left out there. There are going to be no permanent features whatsoever.
No bleachers.
No baseball backstops.
No bleachers.
No baseball backstops.
Nothing.
Mr. Schultz.
As long as you're mentioning that, I'm assuming that the little league ball fields are going to be oriented so that if someone does hit a good ball, they go into the church parking lot and hit somebody's car, not into the neighbor's backyard?
I certainly hope so, yes.
Mr. Crin.
Just a follow-up on the, that wall. I, I totally understand and concur with Mr. Schultz about it's got to be a masonry wall. Now, in those masonry precast sections, can there be a gateway? In other words, if we move that wall back ten feet from the pro, actual property line, again, it becomes, the church has to maintain that property even though it's behind that wall. I know, I, I know of a resident in my neighborhood that has their fence ten feet back from their property line, and they maintain that behind there, but they just, that was their choice to, to keep that wooded area, and they wanted their yard empty from the woods. But the point I'm getting at is, can, can that construction, that concrete barrier have some kind of gate entrance? I mean, it doesn't have to be more than one or two to go through and then maintain that property on the other side of the wall and still, still keep some of the, if not the, the existing? Because I, I totally agree. Silver maples are a horrible tree. I mean, I've got one in my front yard, and it's just a constant maintenance. It's a mess. But even if you removed all the trees, but planted some more, well, the approved type trees in Troy on both sides of that wall, again, to give some kind of visual appeal on both sides. I realize, you know, technically, that resident, I mean, that's, that's the line, and they, if they want some visual appeal on their side of the property, then they've got to put it in. It's, but, but I'm just asking if, if something, some kind of semi, some creative way to, to handle this, so it's not such a stark change from wood to a wall.
Is it possible to have an opening? Sure. I'm not sure with a masonry structure how you would, I mean, the, the gate would have, they have to be some other type of material and how that's connected and whatnot, but that's not something that we're necessarily interested in mainly, for, for the, for the same reasons, really, that have already been discussed, the, the maintenance aspect. Obviously, the gate would provide the maintenance, but as much as the church wants to have control over the maintenance, I don't know actually who does the maintenance, if it's someone from their congregation that does the maintenance, or if they hire somebody. But if that usual person doesn't cut the grass, is out that one day, they're supposed to cut the church grass, so they have somebody coming in there and don't know, oh, there's ten feet on the other side of the wall, needs to be cut, there's a potential for that area maybe not to be maintained. But then, the, the other side of that is essentially we're giving away whatever the distance is, ten feet of property. I mean, we're not, but that, that's the-
You are.
Illusion.
I understand. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Edmonds.
I, I'm, after listening to all this debate, I'm, I'm now leaning more towards the, the wall on the property line, period. And, but I would certainly vote for much more increased evergreens on the, on the church's side, maybe staggered, staggered, maybe ten feet apart, but a couple rows, maybe, and leave enough room for them when they mature, that they could still not be running into that wall.
That would be no problem whatsoever.
Mr. Carlo, what percentage of opacity does this wall have to maintain?
Eighty percent.
Eighty? Any other questions? Thank you. Mr. Robinson.
Well-
Chairman. Yes. The site plan does not indicate that wall continues all the way across. Does that something should be as part of the motion? That it be extended all the way to?
Dequender.
Dequender.
Yes, that would, yeah, yes.
Just want to make sure that that is the case.
I just want to let the petitioner know, before we vote, you need to have a majority of the nine members, so that'd be five. Two members are missing tonight. So, that, I just want to let you know that if you want to, want us to proceed with this matter, or if you want to postpone it until we have all nine members. Okay. Any more discussion at the table? Mr. Sanzika.
Well, honestly, I don't feel comfortable voting for this today. I, I'd really like to see a revised plan, showing the revised landscaping, the wall extending. If you're going to propose a wall or some other type of material to the quinder, I'd like to see that. And, you know, there's just too many unknowns here that we're voting on at this point in time. So, I'd like to discuss it with the board, but I'd, I'd really like to see a, a revised plan and have it resubmitted with the tree survey and with all the other information that the planners asked for.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Schultz. I would also support postponing this until the petitioner can come back with a revised plan indicating the full length of the wall, increased new landscaping closer than thirty feet on center on the south side of the wall, and so that we have a plan that represents what we're in fact approving, not something that does not represent what we would be approving.
Mr. Chairman. Yes.
Yeah, I would concur with that. I, I feel uncomfortable with that, but I would also like to see if there can't be something done with the drainage situation, so that we're not cutting down all those trees within that fifty-foot area there, just for the benefit of putting some drainage in there, if we can't do something more creative with stormwater drainage. So, that's my area of concern as well.
Mr. Crin.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Schultz and Mr. Sanzika that the plan before us is not something I could vote and approve on, approve of. The, I understand the pluses and minuses of having the wall right on the property line. I could go with that right on the property line. I'd prefer it back some, but I can see the, the, the problems it could cause. But, but what I'd like to see is the landscaping on the church side be more extensive than it is. A tree every thirty feet is too sparse to me. I'd like to see some depth to that. Again, that would really affect mostly the people from the church side looking at it, but also from the residential side, if there, event, if there are a lot more conifers protect, giving a, a visual screen and, and some sound deadening. I realize the majority would be from the, the concrete, but some sound deadening, because conifers can grow thirty, forty, fifty feet high. That would help the sound deadening, but, but just having one tree depth wouldn't be sufficient. You'd have to, like Mr. Edmonds was saying, stagger some, some trees, make that depth closer to the thirty-foot away back from the wall, so you've got a real solid lush visual and hopefully some sound deadening from those kind of trees. Thank you.
Mr. Schultz.
You know, also in looking at the plan, I don't think five to six-foot conifers are adequate. I think they should be taller than the wall. I would propose eight to ten-foot conifers instead of five to six-foot, because it's going to be five or eight years before those trees ever even make it above the six-foot screen wall, because there's going to be a, there's going to be a period where they don't grow upon transplant. They're just going to lay dormant for a couple seasons. So, I don't think five to six-foot tall trees serve any purpose other than to screen the wall from the church side, and I don't think that's the intent.
I'm sorry, I have a question for you. You used the word masonry wall. Are you thinking of a concrete wall that has a brick pattern to it, or are you actually using masonry?
It's a precast masonry wall.
So, is it, is it brick?
Look, is it?
No, I wouldn't call it like a, not a brick veneer like this.
I understand. I know what a precast wall is, but usually, to precast it, it's a, it's concrete. And the question is, is it a concrete face, or is there brick on the precast when it's, when the wall is made?
It's got maybe the surface of a utility block, as opposed to a regular brick veneer.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Sahana.
Mr. Chairman, I, I can, I can count pretty well. And by my math, there's, there's potential for this to be postponed. I think it would be a good idea for the petitioner to bring in an example, a cut sheet, material example, whatever, to make it clear what is proposed for the wall. A cut sheet would, would suffice, but it sounds like there's, there's some confusion about, about what this wall's going to look like. Also, if, if it is postponed, I think they need clear direction, which they've been given, I believe. And if we do postpone it, it needs to be to a date certain. There's a number of people in the audience who I believe are probably going to want to follow this, this item, and they're going to want to come back to another meeting. So, if we do postpone it, to a date certain.
Well, I will just add a couple of comments. I'm not for the wall. I'm for leaving a buffer of, of trees there. I understand the, the acoustic ash issue. Quite honestly, kids yelling fifty feet away, the wall's not going to do much to-
It's not going to do anything.
To, to really defer the yelling. I'm more concerned with the one lady that got up and said she was picture falling off her wall. I mean, I don't know if that's true or not, or the music, or the, you know. But I'm just telling you guys personally, to clearcut that property, I'm not, I'm not in favor of that. So, I would suggest too, as you, as you move forward with this thing, if we do postpone it tonight, talk with planning commission, or planning director and our planning consultant, see if there's a compromise position you can work out. Do we have a motion tonight? Oh, Mr. Carlo.
I just have one point of clarification. I think the direction is fairly clear. The one thing that I was uncertain was the, are you requesting the applicant do a full tree survey for this property as well, or is that not going to be-
What's the ordinance require?
Ordinance... Good question. I'll look that up.
They need to provide some form of a tree survey.
I'm sorry?
They must provide some, some form of a tree survey.
Can you direct them as to what you feel would be adequate information for us to understand what they're proposing?
I can provide the, the provision to Mr. Robinson tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Schultz.
I'd just like to make one thing clear. My conversations about the wall are because it appears to me that the majority of my counterparts were favoring a wall. I happen to agree with the chairman that I would prefer to see a buffer. I think that if it's a matter of putting up a wall to keep children from wandering into folks' backyards, I think the church needs to provide more supervision to the children that are on the field. If there's a wall put up, you can precast a wall to just about any finish you want, and I think it would be much more acceptable to the property owners if the wall appeared to be brick, as in the brick behind us, instead of cement block walls. You can order precast concrete in just about any finish you want, but I would personally prefer to see a twenty-five foot buffer of trees and where there is not a buffer of trees existing in that twenty-five feet that one be planted, rather than putting a wall directly on the property line. However, the petitioner has indicated that the wall is a requirement for them, so.
Mr. Edmonds.
Well, another option, not to confuse the issue, but supposing you were to leave the trees there for the first twenty-five feet, that means that you, the church would not have to continue to maintain that area, because it's all wooded and you can't really do any maintenance in a wooded area, and then put some kind of an attractive fence on their, on, you know, on their, in their property to keep the children from running into the woods.
I, you know, again, this, this, the idea of a fence keeping children on one side or the other, I think, is ludicrous. Kids will get over a fence if they want to get over a fence. And it's, it's a parental thing or an adult thing, not a management. It's not, how many barriers can we put up to prevent the kids from getting, so.
Climb them out.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Stratt.
Yeah, by the testimony that several- Yeah, by the testimony that several people had made, that they had maintained the yardage. As a matter of fact, they mowed the lawn and everything else. If that fence were to be placed right on the property line, you know, if it were twenty-five feet back, it still would not be within the yardage of the vegetation that they were talking about preserving. I don't know if I'm making my point, but my point is, is there's no straight line there right now where the vegetation stops or where the wooded area stops. So I'm all for keeping it right on the fence line, and I'd recommend maybe you might want to even get maybe an acoustics person to give you some data on the acoustic value of masonry versus vegetation, just so that you have that. But I think that I would not be worried about the children of the church as I would be about the other children on the other side. How do you control them? I'm sure the church can control their own children, but whether they can control the neighbors, the other neighbors, I don't know. Six-foot-high fence is a pretty good-sized fence. So I'm all for the fence being a hardened surface area there, both from my experience of acoustics as well as from the standpoint of maintaining your grounds.
Mr. Schultz.
Question for the petitioner. Based on the direction that you've received, the input that you've received, how much time do you need to prepare the necessary information before you can come back before this body?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
The petitioner indicated thirty days, so the reg, the special meeting.
You need thirty days?
The petitioner indicated that the planning commission meeting, that's approximately thirty days from now, they'd be able to meet the, to give us, is that what you're saying?
I'd like it sooner. I think he'd like it sooner, but he wants to make sure that we know.
Sorry, typically, we need to submit the data thirty days prior to the meeting. So submitting plans tomorrow isn't going to happen. The biggest issue is the tree inventory, basically. Just thinking ahead, just for everyone's benefit, we're probably not going to do a tree inventory of the whole area because seventy-five percent of the trees will be removed, at least for the fields and, you know, certain areas. So I could see, and I mention this because to get a little bit of feedback on the limits of the tree inventory, but I could see maybe doing a detailed tree inventory in that fifty-foot setback area to get an idea of the number of trees, type, size.
I think that would be satisfactory.
Okay, so covering that area, yeah. We are at the tail end of July, so I would have to assume probably the second meeting in?
September.
September is probably most realistic.
Yeah. Sharon?
Yes, Mr. Schultz.
I move to postpone this item until the second meeting or special study session in the month of September of this body.
I'll second that.
Mr. Crin, second. All right, Kathy.
Mr. Crin.
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mr. Stratt.
Yes.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
Mr. Kempin.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, our next item. Item number nine, Public Hearing Zoning Ordinance Text Amendment, File Number Zota 245.
Chairman, do you want to take a five-minute?
No, I want to get through this item, and then we'll take.
Go through it real quick.
All right, I'm sorry. It's File Number Zota 245, Sober Living Facilities. And who will make the presentation? Mr. Sahana.
Excuse me. This, this presentation is related to Zota, Zoning Ordinance Text Amendment 245 regarding sober living facilities. The planning commission has discussed this item at a number of meetings. Most recently, two study meetings. The intent is, of the provision is to define and regulate sober living facilities. As you're aware, the planning commission, a number of months ago, recommended approval of draft language that went before city council. City council made a number of suggestions related to the language, sent it back to the planning commission for consideration. The planning commission revised the previous draft, and essentially what they did to the regulations was, was eliminate sober living facilities from single-family residential districts. They capped the number of residents in a sober living facility at twenty, and they increased the square footage requirement for sober living facilities whereby a caregiver had to provide at least four thousand square feet per resident. I would note that Lori Bloom reviewed the language today and recommends changing the word constitute in a definition. It's the last sentence in a definition. It says, "This definition does not constitute halfway houses for those released from prison or homeless situation." She recommended changing the word constitute to encompass. I think that's a good change. So I think it's a better word. But with that being said, Mr. Chairman, this is a public hearing for consideration of this item. We've talked about this a lot of meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? All right, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this item? I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the table. Any discussion, gentlemen? Mr. Schultz.
I just have to make a comment before there's a resolution on the floor. I cannot support recommending to city council that the city amend its ordinances to accommodate a classification of care facility which is not recognized, regulated, nor licensed by the state of Michigan. I believe we are putting the cart before the horse, and I cannot support this.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Someone like to make a motion? Mr. Kempin?
I'll make the motion. Resolve that the planning commission hereby recommends to the city council that Articles 2, 4, 6, and thirteen of Chapter Thirty-nine of the Code of the City of Troy, which includes miscellaneous provisions related to sober living facilities, be amended as printed on the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment.
Support. Mr. Stratt, any further?
Mr. Chair, I would, I do recommend that you make that revision, and if you say as printed, then you don't encompass the, the change to encompass.
Thank you. Thank you.
I will amend that to include your word change.
Mr. Stratt, do you still support? Is there any discussion before we take the vote? All right, Kathy.
Mr. Sanzika.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
No.
Mr. Stratt.
Yes.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
Mr. Kempin.
Yes.
Mr. Crin.
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. We are going to take a five-minute break, and then we will return and take care of the next item, which I know most of you are here for.
Turn the light on. But you had a wrong.
Moving on to item number 10. This is also a public hearing. It's a conditional rezoning application. File number CR009. Proposed Troy Marriott Hotels, west side of Stevenson Highway, north of 14 Mile 333 Stevenson Highway, section 35, from O Office District to OM Office Mixed Use District. And Mr. Carolina, was that you?
Thank you. As the chairman noted, this is a conditional rezoning request at 333 Stevenson Highway. The applicant, the current property is zoned office and the applicant is requesting a conditional rezoning to office mixed use. The purpose of the request for the conditional rezoning is to develop two hotels on this property. The, the office zoning, which is the property is currently zoned, does not allow a hotel or lodging use. However, however, the conditional rezoning to an office mixed use does allow a hotel use through the special use process. The surrounding land uses for this site include a mix of office, industrial, lodging, as well as single-family residential, which abuts, abuts to the rear of the property. The zoning along Stevenson is a mix of industrial business, office mixed use, research center, and straight office zoning. If the planning commission would remember, the property just to the south, which is zoned office, did come in and did receive a recommendation from the planning commission to rezon, conditional rezon to IB. However, the applicant did not go forward with that application to the city council, so it currently remains in its state of office zoning. This is a conditional rezoning and in order to protect the adjacent single-family properties, the applicant has submitted conditions upon the rezoning. And they have submitted a conceptual site plan, which does match the conditions which they propose. And the conditions that they are, had volunteered on the property include a forty, a forty-foot front yard setback, a forty-foot side yard setback, a hundred-foot rear yard setback, a limitation to four stories rather than the five stories allowed in the office mixed use district, an eighty percent screening as well as the, as the screen wall, and limit to hotel use only. The conditions proposed by the applicant do exceed most of the current O district standards as well as most of the requested OM district standards. In regards to the relationship to the master plan, the, the site is located on the border of the Smart Zone and Twenty First Century Industrial Area. In terms of land uses, both these areas recognize the need to allow for alternative uses than currently found in the traditional manufacturing and office market, especially in light of the current office market and the, the amount of vacancies currently in the area and in Troy itself. So in short, the proposed conditional zoning does, is supported by the master plan. However, we do need to be cognizant of the impacts on the adjacent single-family residential. It's really up to the applicant to prove and the planning commission to concur that a hotel use, one, can be compatible with the adjacent single-family residential. And if that finding can be made, has the applicant provided the necessary conditions upon their approval to mitigate any potential impacts on that single-family residential. The last thing I will note is that this still has to go through the site plan review process and the special use process, assuming, preserving, presuming, or based on if, if, if the city council does approve the conditional rezoning. Again, it still has to go through the site plan and special use process, so additional considerations can be done through that process as well after the adoption of this rezoning. That concludes my report and open to any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Carolina? Seeing none. Petitioner here? Would you like to step forward, please?
Andy Wakelin with Giffords Webster.
Well, I'm Jeff Rance with Victor Swalke and Associates. We're both signed in.
Thank you.
Like Ben said, we're just asking for a conditional rezoning of this property. Like he also said, we're kind of going over what the office district already allows. Currently, someone could build a three-story office building fifty foot from that back setback, but we don't want to do that. We want to put our building as close to the front setback as we can, going with the Marriott standards and with the usable parking in the front. So we are proposing that we are going to move that building. The rear setback is actually a hundred foot. We think that we will far exceed that, probably a hundred and, at least a hundred and fifty foot. But we, just to be sure, we want to say that it's going to be a hundred-foot rear yard setback. We're trying to mitigate as much as we can with the residential behind by putting in landscaping. We'll have an eight-foot wall of shrubs along that, along that back rear yard setback, as well as we have put in quite a few trees throughout the parking lot. Those will be about twenty-foot tall trees. That'll also break up that hotel that the residents may be able to see behind them. And Jeff, did you have anything that you wanted to throw in as well?
Yes. You know, we're, we're obviously, we're asking for the, the conditional rezoning that will have to design to the setbacks and everything that we've outlined in the letter. But as Andy said, we're designing the buildings even further away from that required setback. We will have to, if we do have the conditional zoning granted, we will have to go in for site plan approval, which will obviously have to meet all the restrictions set forward tonight. So there will be additional discussion concerning the design of the buildings. What we have shown right now, both in plan and elevation, are Marriott prototypes for these hotels. Their prototypes are four stories. All of the materials that we're proposing, eventually proposing to use are Marriott standards. So these are all premium elements to these buildings. There'll be brick, there'll be cement board, there'll be some EFS. The Fairfield Inn and Suites is a more modern-looking building. The Town Place Suites is a more traditional-looking building. But again, this obviously is for the conditional rezoning so that we can set forth these designs and to go in for site plan approval.
Good. Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Mr. Schultz?
Just, not that it's going to weigh into the decision, but hopefully the Fairfield is not the same design that is currently south of 14 Mile Road?
No.
Because it's an incredibly unattractive building?
It's a, it's a very updated look. In fact, I do have, I do believe we submitted with the requirements what the buildings will look like. I do have some copies of those that you can look at right now.
Just, just a simple question.
Yes, it will look much better than the Fairfield Inn that is in Madison Heights, I believe it is, right now.
Mr. Krent.
And along that same line, this will not have any consequence, but since we did get a letter from James Stone, I just wanted your, if you could answer his thoughts about, he questions why building, build on that side of 14 when you have a Fairfield already on this side and could acquire the property next door to it. Give him some kind of an answer, it'd be nice to hear.
Unfortunately, I haven't seen that letter. But you're, you talking about the Fairfield Inn south of 14 Mile?
Yes, and then there's the, the restaurant that used to be occupying the.
I know that the, from my limited knowledge, I know that the developer.
Sir, if you want to come on up, just sign in and state your name. Yes, you can come on up.
Good evening. My name is Akram Namo and I'm going to be part owner or principal of this project. Good point was brought that indeed the license or the Marriott people have gone away from the design and the structure that is on the other side of 14 Mile in Madison Heights. So obviously, this was a twenty-year-old design and obviously Marriott has improved the standards and the requirements. So this will be a, a brand-new Fairfield that is way, way higher than what we have today there. And it's going to be interior corridor, indoor pool, et cetera. So basically, the design is a very much upscale design in comparison to what we have over there. And the question, the second question was, basically, our, the life of that hotel has diminished, basically, and the Marriott wanted to replace it with another upgraded product. So we felt that the closest we are to what we have is, is better. So we found the site and we are developing. We have tried definitely to acquire the old restaurant that is, you know, next door to us, but obviously, they, the seller was, you know, it was impossible to deal with the situation and the seller really was not, really had good incentives to sell. So this is an old office building, empty, has been empty for a long time. It's an eyesore, I believe, in my opinion, in the city of, of Troy. And having this project developed over there is a, is a really, an upgraded situation. And just want, I want to just explain that the two, Town House Suites is a somewhat of a residential hotel. It's an extended stay hotel. Average stay is, you know, really seven days to thirty days in that. So there's a minimal traffic in that. Fairfield is another upscale hotel and definitely it, it's a transient hotel. There's more, a little bit more traffic than the Town Place Suites. They will go side by side because they will complement. We did a study and I have been in the business of hotels for many years. This two hotel, they complement each other pretty much as a Marriott concept. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Please sign in, sir, before you sit down. Please sign in. Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? All right. If you gentlemen have a seat. I'll open the public hearing. And if there's anyone here that would like to speak to this item, please step forward, name, and sign in. Thank you.
I have signed in already. My name's Nick Pinchoff. I'm married and a father of two at 302 Redwood. I'm here on my first-year-old birthday, or my one-year-old's birthday, to talk about the rezoning. My wife Teresa's a teacher who spends most of the summer spending time with her children in our backyard, playing on the swing set, swimming in the kiddie pool, gardening, and having friends over for general entertaining. My family and I are against the proposed zoning changes due to the following. Privacy invasion. Our family would have full view of the hotels as, as well as it onto us. Neighbors just taking a stroll down Redwood would have prying eyes on them from four stories high. Two, nuisances. Coming and going of vehicles and people at all hours, opening and closing of doors, headlights from vehicles and hotel lighting. Just this past Sunday, while sitting outside, we could hear a car alarm coming from the Holiday Inn parking lot, which is across Stevenson. Now imagine that right behind us. Three, property value. No one would want to move to a neighborhood where you're sharing your backyard with resident hotel patrons. And four, general need. There are four hotels within a quarter-mile radius from the 14 and Stevenson intersection, none of which backs up to a peaceful neighborhood. So I implore the commission to keep the zoning as it is for the good residents of Redwood Drive who would not want to raise their children with hotel patrons. Thanks.
Thank you.
James Stone, and thank you, I've signed in, and thank you for reading my letter and concern. My wife and I raised two children there. We're forty-four-year residents. We're not the only ones who've been there forty, fifty years. We have others here who are nodding their heads. They all had at least two or three or four children, all of whom they raised. In some cases, the property is now owned by their children. Okay? I can think even the street adjacent around the corner. My children played with the Frickcells. Laura Frickell lives there now, married with three children. I can walk out my front door on the right side. Heather and Tim have two children, ages, now they're five to nine now. The Pennshots you just met on my left side, directly across the street from my front door. Family with two youngsters under the age of five. And directly diagonally, two children in a married family, their ages approximately eleven to fifteen. At any evening, you can see plenty of people riding up and down the street on our bicycles, walking their dogs. It's a very peaceful little enclave. It's pretty much walled off from, through, it is walled off from through traffic. Okay? So that's the kind of place it is. The residents care about one another. Every single resident from 194 to 350 Redwood Drive has expressed, and I had to go, I was on, I didn't have to, I was on vacation. But they left me a voicemail. It was adamant. Adamant about this. Now, I got to thinking when I first got the notification. It wasn't about my property, it wasn't about the neighbors, and it wasn't about the neighborhood. It was bewilderment. It was, another hotel in this area is 14 Mile and 75 becoming the new Mecca for business travelers and leader, family travelers? I couldn't believe it. I see what the occupancy rate is, and they, the world can supply statistics, but I'm in that area all the time, in and out. There's plenty of occupancy. There are nine, well, across the street, a new Holiday Inn suite, almost directly across the street from this proposed site, that just went up. I don't know how that's doing, very attractive place, but it, like every single hotel motel I can think of, backs to not a neighborhood or residential property. Now, the last place I stayed was a Marriott. I think Marriott's are wonderful. I was in Connecticut. I happened to be on the fourth floor. You know what one of the first things I do when I walk in a hotel or motel, and I've been in at least over 500, I've always, I've traveled a lot. I stayed where I am because I wanted to do other things with my life. Okay? Children's colleges are paid, a whole series. I own other property. Peaceful, nice place. I'd like to stay, see it, stay that way, especially for the newcomers into the, into the neighborhood. The first thing I do after dropping my belongings is I go to the window. Half the time, the drapes are closed, depends on what time you show up. Half the time, they're open if the sunlight's coming through. And I thought about that for a minute and said, what do I see when I look out that window? I've seen ponds, golf courses, I've seen commercial shopping centers, I've seen gas stations, I've seen throughways. I had never, ever seen a neighborhood. Now, through some treetops, I might have seen a few rooftops. But I had never, ever seen or been in a place where I could look out the window at neighbors' backyards, at their kitchen window, at their bedroom window. You can put a building setback wherever you want, there's still a parking lot. And there's a clear view. Now, scare tactics, I'm not going to use here, I'm, I'm not using scare tactics here, but believe me, for the first time that I can remember in all my years, we had a stalker in the neighborhood. Now this guy has to ride along his bicycle, because he doesn't like to run like his wife does, ride around and tag around with her because he's worried about it. Well, we know that motels and hotels, no matter how upscale, okay, attract some of the best people in the world and some of the worst of the worst. All you need is a credit card. I'll make one final appeal, because I don't want to take a lot of your time here. It's been a long night. But I'll just ask you. If your property was directly behind a hotel or motel, how would you feel about that? And I ask that you keep this as a good, quiet, peaceful community. And I've been here long enough to know that even an upscale hotel, and I made reference to it in my letter, it was the flagship of the community. And by the way, I used to go to the Northfield Hilton a lot. I don't go around there anymore. That's even taking in some transient people on a semi-permanent basis. There's not a need in this area for another hotel motel at 14 and 75. No way. There's plenty of other vacant opportunities and there's plenty of office space. My lord, my daughter lives up near Crooks and, you know, the exit off of there, Crooks. You come off that moonscape road and there's all kinds of leases. And none of that backs residential property. One last thing, yeah?
Yeah, could you wrap it up? Thank you.
Near Somerset, same thing. Plenty, there's plenty of other property not adjacent to residents where you can build a hotel. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I'm not going to steal your pen.
Hi, my name is Sally Wilshire. I already signed in earlier. I just, I've lived in Troy most of my life, except for two years out of my whole life, where I lived in Sterling Heights. I just recently purchased a house at 350 Redwood. I'm a single parent. I love my neighborhood. I've been there about a year, I've been, it was a foreclosed home. I've been fixing it up along the way. It's, I have great neighbors, I can't complain. When I heard about this going up behind us, it, it drew some concerns. As a single parent, I have an eight-year-old daughter. There are plenty of kids in the neighborhood that play with each other. I frequently run, ride my bike. Very peaceful neighborhood. I'm asking that you do not rezon this. I too feel that there is no need. We have fourteen major hotels in the city of Troy that equals about 2,400 rooms. There are seven other major hotels within a mile of Madison Heights, most of them are off Stevenson, that have 821 rooms. I researched an article on cranesdetroit.com that was dated March 3, 2013. The occupancy rate in Michigan is 70.1% for hotels. They said they're starting to build more hotels because they can get almost an eight percent increase in their profits. My other concern is, at night, I have pictures I took of the Holiday Inn Express that they just built across, it looks nice, but not for my backyard at night. It's blinding. I have to get some darkening blinds at night because it's, it's really bright across the street. Now, if there's a hotel a few houses down with parking lot lights, is it going to be daylight all, all the time at my house? I'm going to have no privacy? Am I going to be able to go outside and like sit on my patio and just relax? I mean, these are questions. I would imagine that no one would want a hotel behind their house. I'm worried about, not only that, I just bought this home. I've, I've put a lot of money into it, I'm fixing it up as I go along. There's a business behind me that my other neighbors have problems with. They do not maintain the fence. Now, if they have this hotel coming in, I know it's not directly behind me, but you, I, I took pictures of the fence. I've called the city to try and maintain, these are just samples of what this fence I mean, they can't even maintain the fence behind me and that's just a nine-to-five business. And I guess there's been poison ivy back there, there's animals, it looks like someone's kicked in my fence. I mean, I can't even really get close to the fence because of the way I cut, but that's another issue. Another, I just, I don't understand why this has to be built on Stevenson on the west side of the street. If they want to build it, they should need to acquire the land at, I believe it's Rankin and Stevenson, about a half-mile up the road. There's an empty lot, there's a whole nother empty building, it's behind industrial park. Those lights are not going to affect people in the neighborhood, it's going to be far enough from our neighborhood, I think. Or, I know they're building the new MJR, there's that, that property behind there that was a, I remember growing up, that was a Farmer Jack. I think there was a Minnesota fabric store, it was behind the McDonald's they just tore down. fabric store, it was behind the McDonald's, they just tore it out. That's been vacant for 25 years. Build it there. That's more industrial. Why, why, I guess I don't understand why they want to rezone this and build it in our neighborhood. I guess, I'm just, I'm begging you, please, to not rezone this area, because I just moved here, and I love my neighborhood, and I don't want to move again.
Thank you.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
My name is Cynthia Wilshire. I live on Maple Road. I'm the mother of Sally. I'm a 58-year resident of Troy. I support these people in this neighborhood in their opposition to this hotel's location. My daughter and granddaughter live in there, and I have an elderly aunt and uncle that live on Burtman, right directly behind where this is going to be built, and it's going to affect, they bought that house when that subdivision opened, and they've lived there practically all their married life, and raised their family there. I'm an ex-travel agent, so I know when you build something like a hotel, you want it closest to the ramp that you can get, and with plenty of restaurants and shopping, so people don't have to drive far, you get a little cluster there. There's already a big cluster of hotels there. And with the new hotel that was just completed, I don't think there's a need for any more rooms. I also brought to my daughter's attention this tract at Rankin and Stevenson, and it's not too far from the other Marriott on Maple Road and Stevenson. It's north of the residential area. That area at one time was proposed, when they tore the Hilton down there, they were going to put a wonderful Home Depot that we were all excited about, which got booted down the road. They were going to do a new concept there with underground delivery system, which the people in that area, the businesses, didn't like the idea that they would be having night deliveries, so that was, was shot down. This neighborhood where my daughter lives is a wonderful neighborhood. I can't tell you how many foreclosed homes we looked in that area in Clausen, that's where she wanted to live. It's a lovely neighborhood, people are friendly, a lot of young kids down there, and great-grandparents, and everybody watches out for each other. It, it's, I don't understand if you approve this rezoning. You had a project not too long ago that was turned down by City Council for DTE, wanted to rent some land at Long Lake and I-75, and that was turned down because a handful of residents didn't want to see these sun reflectors out their second-floor bedroom windows, and I believe the count was six houses. These things made no noise. I've been out to the facility that some of them went to look at in White Lake, and that was turned down. Now, we're supposed to be the city of tomorrow, today, I feel that should have gone through. I would welcome that kind of thing in my neighborhood. No noise, I live right on Maple Road, I'm surrounded by offices and businesses. There was also another project for a five-story storage unit. I happen to have stuff, and they're one of their other storage units. It's well-maintained and nice, but why couldn't that have been built on the corner of Long Lake and Rochester Road, in the old, empty A&amp;P store? That would not affect families. I, I don't understand what hap, what's happening. And this would be the same type of thing, you're bringing something in to a neighborhood that you wouldn't want in your own neighborhood. So I would please ask you to reconsider going forward with this rezoning, and suggest that they find another location. Lord knows, we've got a lot of vacant commercial land around that would be ideal for two new hotels. Thank you.
My name is Kaye Lavruska, and I've lived in my home at 278 Redwood for 54 years. And I've loved my neighborhood, and I treasure the privacy that I have to go out in my backyard, and work in the yard, sit on my deck. And I've had nightmares over this. So please do not change it to have hotels back there.
Thank you. Did you sign in, ma'am?
Yes, I did.
Did you?
Good evening. I'm Mike Davy. I live at 325 Redwood Drive. I appreciate Jim coming out here and getting this started, because I had no idea it was sneaking up on us. Troy has done a pretty good job in the zoning when it comes to the hotels. I'm not aware of anywhere else in the city of Troy where hotels are allowed to back up to a residential area. What I'd like to encourage is, I know you have your map up there with that nice zoning, where we're trying to, to get some more business and some renovations going, but for us down at this corner, our, our neighborhood doesn't stop there at those lines at 14 Mile Road. We jump over the intersection at Campbell there, is four cities, you've got Royal Oak, Clausen, Troy, and Madison Heights. To us, it's all the same neighborhood. So when you see Fairfield, a couple blocks away, down Stevenson Highway, it still feels like our part of a neighborhood. Still affects the way we do business around that area. So when I hear somebody say, well, hey, that building, it's, it's 20 years old, it's getting out of date, we're going to put a brand-new one. The question to me right away is, what's going to happen to that other Fairfield then? Is it going to be reduced? So, great, upscale there, two blocks away, it's going to be going down scale, right? I think if you're a little bit more creative, those zoning areas, those pink zones that you had up on that map, if you look at 14 and a half at Rankin, rather than 14 Mile Road, there's an expansive area, you could put much more than two hotels there, do more industry even behind that without jeopardizing the status quo of keeping them, keeping them separate, you know? So, and I know it's nice to be near the ramp, but getting off the ramp and going up another 500 meters doesn't seem like a terrible thing to me, so.
Thank you.
And let me sign in. Thank you.
Thank you. Just ask if you're kind of, please come forward. If you're going to repeat what we've heard, okay.
I agree with everything that, my name's Mary Jo Austin, I live at 242 Redwood. I agree with everything that's been said. I'm going to talk about the fence. It's an ugly cement fence, which you talked about for the church. But anyway, they're, they're going to put landscaping on their side of the fence, so from Stevenson, it'll look beautiful. They're talking about putting some kind of trees that will be 10 to 12 feet, I forget what they said. The fence is six foot, the building's four stories, a 10-foot tree isn't going to hide anything. And then they say that there's a few places through the parking lot where they're going to put 20-foot trees, that's not going to hide anything. So, it's going to be, it would be very nice looking from Stevenson, but that doesn't help the subdivision at all. We're still going to have four stories looking into our backyard, and we have to look at. Right now, there's an ugly building there, the Bell Building, which is four stories, but it's empty and quiet. And it doesn't cover the whole bunch, the whole length of that. So when we look out, we can see in between, around the building, and see trees and open air, but with the solid two hotels, we're just going to be looking at four stories of building.
Did you sign in, ma'am? Ma'am? Did you? Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Bring it back to the table for discussion. Any comments, questions, Mr. Edmonds?
I would just like to ask the petitioner, what were the criteria you used in selecting this piece of property, when other options were pointed out by the public?
The, before any Marriott approves any site, they come and do their homework and research. And we have done a lot of research and homework, and we found this to be close to the highway, you know, convenient to the, to the people to exit in and out. It is close to the other building, and the other building will be still enhanced, it's not going to be left the way it is after leaving the system from Fairfield. So, simply, we have done a lot of research and homework, and we found this to be close to the exit, and it's a hotel area on that exit, and definitely a busy area, and it's more corporate and business traveler-oriented. So that's the incentive that we had.
If I may just follow up?
Yes.
Did you anticipate this level of opposition to this project, and did you even consider going to the neighbors to have a meeting with them?
Yes, indeed, we did a pre, we did a meeting.
You did do a briefing?
Yes, yes, we had a meeting, we invited all the residents for, previous to this, and to explain and discuss the project, so.
Yes, actually, just last week, I believe, we had a, we had a meeting with all the residents within 300 feet, or we notified those residents within 300 feet, we got those addresses from the city. They recommended the idea, we thought it was a great idea, that way we could get the public input, because we want to be a good neighbor, we want to work with the neighbors. Unfortunately, only one resident was able to make it that night, but, you know, we're trying to incorporate the ideas that they have, and obviously, during our site plan, we can work with them more, if you guys can rezone this property, we can work with them more so that we can come up with a way that can make it a much more appealing site to everyone. But I did just want to bring up one other point. Currently, it's zoned office. As a part of that zoning, currently, you could, as I said before, you can build up to 50-foot within that back property line, and we're proposing to go way far away from that. You can go 50-foot, you can go three stories tall. So currently, you could build a primary or secondary school that could be right there. You could build a convalescent center where people would be living and also looking out the windows, but much closer. You could build a post-secondary school, you could have a college that's three stories tall, 50-foot from that back property line, and you could have tons of people there. You could have a, a bus transit passenger station, or taxi cab offices, or dispatch center, right on that property line. You could have an adult daycare center, right at that 50-foot. You could have a financial institution, if a bank wanted to put in their headquarters or something right there, they could build that. Any office use, obviously, a medical building or a professional medical office, you could have a, any other uses, several industrial uses. So any of those uses are going to bring some kind of lighting standards. Obviously, they would all have to meet the city of Troy standards, where the light's not allowed to leave the site. It's going to be held within our site, that's why we're also implementing more landscape so that we can alleviate that issue that any residents would have, and we're here and willing to work with them as much as possible if we can get this rezoned so that we can really make this dilapidated site that's vacant usable for the whole city of Troy.
Thank you.
Mr. Schultz? Question for Mr. Savinat. Is my memory failing me, or in the past, when we did conditional rezonings, did it not include a detailed site plans so that we know what we were proposing to rezone?
Prior to the comprehensive rewrite of the zoning ordinance, we did require site plans. However, we do not require site plans anymore.
Okay, my question is, what are we conditionally requesting the rezoning for if we don't have a site plan?
The applicant has voluntarily offered seven conditions in writing.
So, so once they bring a site plan in that meets those seven conditions, we have no alternative other than to approve it?
No, it would, it would still be subject to preliminary site plan approval and special use approval. So the, the conditions would kind of frame, frame the application, those conditions, just really briefly. It would be rezoned OM for lodging purposes only, so the, the use is going to be set in stone. The front setback shall be 40 feet, the rear setback shall be 100 feet, the side setback shall be 40 feet. The screening wall in the rear yard shall remain and is to be maintained in good condition. Landscape screening shall be provided along the rear of the site, and the proposed building shall not exceed four stories. Those are the conditions that were, that would be voluntarily proposed by the applicant.
Okay, well, I have a problem with a row of shrubs directly adjacent to the west property or west boundary of the parking lot. I know we can't demand things, but I think it would be better if they would propose a, a line of 20-foot-tall trees in that greenbelt. This is just a very rudimentary little sketch that we have, and I personally have a problem requesting the city council to rezone this property based on something that, you know, has virtually no detail. And, and from my understanding of the conditional rezoning law, if they meet those seven things that they now say they're going to do, we really don't have any alternative than to say, yes, go ahead and build it. There's going to be no discussion after that.
Well, again, they would be subject to the, the conditional rezoning agreement, that would stipulate these conditions, and it would have to come back to Planning Commission for preliminary site plan approval and special use approval, so it'd still be subject to standards of the ordinance as related to the special use application.
Mr. Curlo?
This is a philosophical difference we've been having with all the conditional rezoning applications, is do we require a site plan and do we not? Your previous ordinance did require a site plan as part of this. The rewrite of the zoning ordinance does not require a site plan, it requires a conditional site plan for consideration. The applicant can offer a site plan as their condition, however, in talking to the application, applicant, we discussed the issues. One of the issues, if they do submit a site plan as part of their condition, it puts the cart a little before the horse, because essentially, the Planning Commission has approved a site plan of special use for a zoning that doesn't exist. That's the first issue. The second issue is, if the site plan is a condition of their approval, what happens in the future when they want to amend the site plan? They have to go back through the conditional rezoning process and then go to the city council to amend their, essentially, their site plan. So procedurally, it creates some issues if the site plan is a condition of the, of the approval. That being said, the applicant can offer, the planning commission can, can discuss, and the applicant can voluntarily offer additional conditions to what they've initially offered to appease some of the issues that the planning commission may have.
They can, but they do not have to.
They do not have to, and if, if the planning commission doesn't feel comfortable with the, with the, with the applicant's issue as their conditional, the planning commission has the right to deny the application. All that being said, they do still have to come back through the site plan and special use approval. Just because you approve the rezoning, the conditional rezoning, that does not require you to approve the site plan and the special use if you, if they do not meet the standards of those, of the special use.
Thank you.
Chairman, my only concern is, your definition of landscape screening and mine, and, and Brent's, and the people out in the audience are all, I mean, Marriott's idea of landscape screening could be three-foot-high private hedge, my idea of landscape screening might be 20-foot-tall trees, and we're, we're conditionally rezoning something that says landscape screening, we have no definition.
Anyone else, Mr. Edmonds?
Well, I certainly concur with Mr. Schultz's points. The, the thing that bothers me the most, you know, this is, this is office property that's vacant, that the city is not getting any revenue for. that the city is not getting any revenue for. You know, there, there's very little revenue. These new hotels would provide considerable revenue. However, we've got to balance that with, what I think is the overriding issue is the privacy. Is there any chance that the windows on the second through the fourth story could be frosted? Or some type of, could be something that people could not look out into somebody's backyard?
Let me make a few comments about that. The, first of all, the, the two hotels that are proposed, 50% of the rooms are facing Stevenson Highway to begin with. In the back of hotels, that's where you tend to have a lot of your spaces and bays that are taken up by your staircases, your elevator shafts, your vending rooms, some of your other uses for the hotel internally. So that'll cut down the amount of rooms that are in the back by about another 25%. So you're talking about 1/4 of all of the rooms in the hotel complex facing the residences. The first floor rooms that will be there are obviously going to be seeing a wall. So then there's another percentage of those rooms that are removed from that additional percentage. So you're talking about a handful of rooms that are facing out onto the back. Now, as far as frosting the windows, that would be something we would have to check with Marriott if they would approve that type of conditioning on their windows. Obviously, these rooms will have curtains. I know that one gentleman said the first thing he does is open up curtains and look out. But, you know, I know I close those curtains at night when I'm in a hotel, sleeping as well. Hotels are considered an extension of residence in, in reality. You have business people who are coming there. For the Fairfield Inn and Suites, they'll be there for a night or two. They're going to their meetings during the day. They're going to work. They're coming at night to sleep. The Town Place Suites, as Akram said, is more of an extended stay where you might have someone coming in that's going to be taking a job for a week or is going to be there for a seminar or be there for a month. So they offer an extended stay where they might have a small little kitchenette where they can go buy some small groceries, maybe prepare a meal in their room. But they will, are, are eventually leaving the hotel. These aren't hotels where there's going to be permanent residents using the hotels.
Question still, still applies.
Yeah.
For those, for those rooms that you say are so minimal that are still facing the back, that are on the second through the fourth stories, would you be able to frost those windows or provide some type of visible barrier? Maybe it's a, a baffle outside of the window or something.
I can't, I, I can't answer that definitively without checking with Marriott first. But is, that is definitely something that we would be more than willing to look into and to present during a site plan approval process.
Thank you.
Mr. Stratt?
You know, the setback, the 100-foot setback that you stated, I guess was stated here. Is that to the one-story portion? And how far would it be from the two-story or the four-story portion?
Well, to the two-story or four-story section, we are actually, obviously, this is conceptual because we didn't, we are estimating that we'd be about 185 feet away. That the 100-foot-
That's what I was just looking at.
Yeah, it's about, I think, 150 or so to that one-story portion.
Well, as, as indicated before, we don't have really drawings in front of us. But I'm assuming that, that one area that's projected out in the back might be a part of a pool or something like that. Is that correct? Which is the one-story portion? Which is where that 100-foot setback is at? Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes.
And therefore, you're talking 180 or whatever you're talking about in terms of. So that versus a office building that could be 50 feet from the back. It's a considerable difference there. Which could be done without any approvals required or any special approvals required right now under the existing ordinance. That's the thing that we have to balance. Like we did before on the other, we had a few other projects that we had to do. But I, I see where you're, what it is. I'm not too sure that I'm, I'm supporting the fact that as long as we have, and I guess this is for staff, you think that we still have some control when that we get into site plan approval? Asking for specific things, as Mr. Schultz said, the 25-foot-tall trees?
It, it would, it would be preliminary site plan approval and more importantly, special use approval.
Yeah, we, they will be coming back for that.
They would have to.
So we could have that option of still mandating.
Correct.
We can't mandate. We can request.
Well, for special use approval, you could condition approval on, you could mandate, I mean, as, as, as per the conditions of the approval.
You can? Okay.
Yes.
That's all I wanted to know.
And if I may, just in case I misspoke, instead of the shrubs, we are actually calling out an eight-foot spruce tree along there. And we do have 20-foot trees throughout the parking lot. Of course, we want to work with the residences. If we need to put in some more 20-foot-tall trees, then we're going to try to-
That's not in our drawings here.
I, I think, I think the taller
Yes.
buffer you can put closer to that fence, the better off you're going to be.
The other thing, there are, there are-
Power lines. Multiple power lines along there that we have to work with as well. So we're, we're trying to get as close as we can, but we can't put 20-foot right where the power lines are at because I don't think the utility company is going to buy that.
Sounds like a personal issue.
Have, have you guys looked at any, any studies where the, the fourth floor window and third floor windows are going to be? And are they really going to be screened from looking in the residents' backyards or back of their homes? I mean, we're talking 20-foot tree, but we're talking what? I don't know what the floor, the 40, the fourth floor, floor elevation will be in the windows.
Um, I-
I mean, we, we can talk about this kind of screening all day, but the fact of the matter is, unless you guys can tell us, no, there's not going to be any privacy issues. I've got some big concerns.
We actually did look, I did look into it. I actually developed a sightline profile, which is, obviously, this, if I can pass it-
Yes, please.
This is a section from one of the homes that we put together. Obviously, this shows the 20-foot tree, which is kind of sporadically placed through there. If those were to be placed throughout, then based upon our calculations, it would screen up until about halfway up on the fourth floor. So, once you see the diagram, you'll see-
Are these, are these deciduous trees? 20-footers?
Yeah, they're a 20-foot tulip tree. So, we show an existing sightline on there. The currently, what's-
Gentlemen, do you like to pass those along?
Yep.
Oh, oh, is it just one copy?
No, there's-
Oh, there's more than one. I'm sorry. We didn't realize there was, there was, it was multiple.
Excuse me, could we have one meeting? We're trying to have a discussion up here, please. If you'd like to have a discussion, could you take it out in the hall?
I'd like to make a comment on one of the points you brought up. Doing a quick calculation based on floor-to-floor heights and a six-foot person standing in the fourth floor looking out the window, their eyes would be approximately in the Towns, in the Town Place Suites, approximately 32 to 33 feet up. So I'm talking the first floor, second floor, third floor. Then that person's eyes, their, that, that eye from a ground plane is 38 feet or 32 feet. In the other hotel, it's about 35 to 36 feet.
On your drawing here, the 70-foot dimension that you have to the left of the property line, what does that represent?
That's to the back of the residence. I mean, if they're, obviously, if they're standing at the six-foot wall, then they're going to be able to, at least I could, because I'm six and a half feet tall, I could see most of what's over there. But I'm also standing basically on the next property over, so.
In this, in this section here, you've got a tree that's 43 feet from the property line, the, the tall tree.
Yes.
Where, where would that fall on the site plan?
Not sure what drawing you have, but that would be-
This drawing?
Yes.
That you just passed out?
Yes.
And I'm looking at the site plan that you submitted. And I'm just trying to place where-
Sorry, that tree would fall within those islands that are back there. And obviously, we want to work with you so we could try to put in more trees, as many as possible.
I'm sorry, are you saying the islands at the end of the parking road?
Yes, oh, sorry if I- Oh, then these islands here. You have one here, here, here.
Okay, okay. So, I mean, I, I get the idea, the sketch, but it's a little misleading. I mean, you're going to have one tree in that island and-
That's why I presented it. I didn't want to make it misleading.
With how many cars you got there, another 150 feet. Oh, there's no trees. Mr. Edmonds, I'm sorry.
It's also a deciduous tree, which means it's only good for sightline. If you're, if you're talking about conifers that are going to be 20 feet high, then, then you're talking about something else. That's-
Well, conifers also, obviously, are going to be like a peak as opposed to the deciduous, which are going to bloom out. So they're going to provide more cover.
The other problem you have too, if I could just follow up, is, you know, you're not citing to a second-floor bedroom in, in, you know, two-story town.
I don't believe there are any-
They're not? Are they all-
Second-floor homes that I'm aware of over there? I believe they're all one-story.
They're all ranches? Thank you.
You done, Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Stratt?
You know, I, I, are you saying that you can't put those trees at the 25-foot line? Is that what you're saying?
At the 25-foot line, I believe that's right where the power poles are within the, I might want to say they're like 15 to 20 feet off. So that's going to be kind of a juggling with that, with the power pole.
Very unusual that power poles aren't on the property line.
Yeah.
The way they're normally installed is on the property line.
Yeah, and they're clearly running within our property.
Oh.
And also, on the backside of that property, there is also currently kind of a drainage area, like a drainage ditch back there. We're planning on greatly improving that by filling in half of it, which would mean that we would have a, a storm pipe underneath that area. And on the other side, we would still have a shallow swale back there. But that's why we wouldn't want to put any trees within that area if we could avoid it just because we don't want the tree to come back and crush the pipe or to block the drainage in that area.
Well, staff is actually saying that we would have the opportunity of reviewing it and making comments and, I don't know, recommendations or giving them what we want or what we would like to see before we approve the site plan approval process. Is that correct?
Yeah, you always got one thing to add, but just to answer your question. So it would be, if you want to thought, you know, it's been mentioned, the Holiday Inn. The Holiday Inn rezoned first to a, to a district that permitted hotels. And then they came before a planning commission with a site plan that the planning commission approved. This would be similar insofar as it would be rezoned, but there'd be a number of conditions that were voluntarily placed on it. It would still have to go before the planning commission for preliminary site plan approval and special use approval. So same, same process, just a little bit more. I wanted to add something about the conditions.
First of all, I think that if you are going to move on this tonight, that I would certainly recommend that you put in your resolution that there will be site, site plan approval and also special use approval. So I think that it doesn't hurt to have that clarified right in your resolution. It's not currently in the resolution, so I would recommend that. Also, you may wish to, you know, sometimes it's helpful to have the conditions added in your resolution. And they're not currently in this resolution. The other thing is, is that we'll, if you do move forward on this, there will be a development agreement, which has not been drafted at this point in time. It's, it's here to you tonight. And then if you do move forward on this before it goes to city council, certainly, we would have to complete the review of a development agreement. So you may also wish to reference that a development agreement would also have to be reached before city council takes any action on this.
Question. Mr. Schultz?
I'm confused. Who drafts the, the development agreement?
Because this is a conditional rezoning and these are conditions that are offered by the developer, it's very difficult for us to, to draft it. We certainly will be reviewing it. But generally, it is something that is done as an offer of what the zoning will be.
Okay, so that is, that is something that the planning commission is not involved in. So we have the potential to have our hands tied even further by the development agreement?
The development agreement basically stipulate, lays out the, what's, what's, what's voluntarily offered by the, by the petitioner. And it formalizes it as part, it's part of the rezoning and it's approved by city council when the, when the, at the, at the meeting that the property is rezoned.
Mr. Stratt?
Yeah, I might understand what you said was that part of the resolution, we should indicate that additional conditions may be added?
No, there are conditions that have been offered and it's detailed in the write-up. But you may wish to just clarify that those are the conditions in your resolution. It's the conditions that, that they have offered and that's really all that you can act on, is whatever they've offered.
And if I can throw in there, I mean, I'm, I'm in the area as well. I use that neighborhood all the time. I live three miles away from here. Obviously, not as close as the residents right behind it, but we want to work with you. If, if you, you know, you want that control to look at it again, you want to be able to give us your ideas. We want to do that. We want to be in the neighborhood. So if you feel you need more control, go on the record as saying that we want you to be able to work with us. We're not going to try to bulldoze anything through. We want to put this development in and make it good for everyone.
Any more discussion? Mr. Curlo?
Just, just a couple of thoughts. I can understand how the residents feel and I can understand your side of the story. It's going to be a tough, tough call. And it, and it really comes down to the details. So we're going to need a lot of control of, basically, I don't want to have residents either being, how do I say, encumbered by your development in any fashion, either by, you know, privacy or lights or noise or activity. It's just a, to tell you the truth, I am on, I'm on the fence. I have no direct, no, I'm not, I don't have a decision tonight personally. I, I just don't see enough here to, I mean, this is, this was very good that you brought this in. But I would like to see the elevate, instead of that human there, I'd like to see the elevation of a house. And see if there are second floors that are affected by that line of sight. It's just, it's just little details. I'm not, I'm not criticizing your work. It's, I'm glad you brought this in. It's very good that you brought this in. But I just like a little more detail on that.
And we're willing to offer as much detail as we can. We just would like to do that during the site plan process if possible so that we can keep this moving forward. But we understand your side as well.
This question is probably, I probably know the answer to this, but is it a viable project if it was a three-story project?
No. The amount of rooms that are required for the development garn, you know, require two-four-story hotels.
Well, I have to tell you, it's not in the details for me. It's the bigger picture. Do you put a four-story hotel behind single-family residences? I don't think you'll find many communities that have done that.
Mr. Schultz?
I can tell you one that did because I used to live behind a five-story hotel directly behind my backyard in Akron, Ohio. And-
It's Ohio for-
of running the property, and when I sold my house, I made a substantial amount of money on it. My concern here, I personally think this can be made to work. I think Marriott is a company of the stature that they have probably done this before. However, a little green and gray and pink, for lack of a better description, PowerPoint drawing for a conditional rezoning, I've got a major case of the chafes with. I need to see a little bit more about, you know, what kind of screening are you proposing? Shrubs with an occasional 20-foot tree? I'm not going to, I'm not going to send a recommendation to city council saying, give this a conditional rezoning, and then have somebody come back with the site plan and say, well, we said we were going to put shrubs and an occasional 20-foot tree, so you're screwed. Pardon my French. I think Marriott probably knows exactly how to make this work, because I'm sure that Marriott has more than one location where their properties back up to residential developments. I'm just not real comfortable with the level of detail we have at this point to go to city council, because once they rezon this, it's rezoned.
Mr. Stratt, did you have a comment?
The area in terms of lighting, I'm not concerned with, because I know that we have controls over the amount of light that would be reflecting on the residents, I bet we have control over. But I do have control over the sightlines. I have concern about that. That, that is concerning, but on the other hand, could be worse, could be 50-foot with a, with a office building or something like that, that would have even worse an impact. I think that would be far worse than what we're doing here. But I'm still on the fence here, I just don't feel I have enough info. I need more detail on this, if that's what we're talking about. I, I'm on the fence. I can just tell you, I just don't know which way I'd go on this.
Mr. Savinat or Laurie, does this take a majority, five votes?
Everything does.
It is a recommendation, so it's a majority of the person's.
Okay. I'll share this as I did with the previous petitioner. There are two planning commission members missing tonight. You still need to get five votes for the, for a majority, so, just to let you know that, if, you know, if we choose to continue, if you choose to postpone or not. And another option, it sounds like some of the commissioners want to see more information before we take any action on this, so, there's a couple of things going on here. I guess the first question we need to ask, are we looking for more information before we take any action? I just straw poll here.
Yes.
Schultz, yeah, well, okay, I guess it's, so we need to be specific about what additional information we need or would like to see.
We're willing to postpone and supply those details, whatever details you need to see to help convince you that this is.
Okay. Well, we're going to get there in the same room. We're going to.
Okay.
Yeah. Laurie, is it, does it matter who actually, the petitioner requests to postpone, or if planning commission postpones by action?
Certainly, it's better if they do, since this is a conditional rezoning, it's certainly better if they, you know, otherwise, it's probably not going to get approved. I'm sure you can count the votes as well. So it's probably better if you ask for a postponement and give us a date that you would like it to be.
My thoughts is really, you know, we want to work with everybody and be adaptable to everybody to eliminate any concerns as much as possible. So my thoughts would be to go back and, you know, fill up some of the gaps and satisfy, get more details, and we'll be happy to come back and, you know.
How much, how much time do you need for that?
You guys answer.
I can do it in a week, but it depends on what the city's going to require me.
Yeah, they are going to work with the staff, I'm sure, and.
If he tells me to do it, I'm going to do it.
Yeah.
I think it would only be fair for us to tell you, what are we looking for here? What more information? Do we want a more accurate site plan? Do we want to see some sections through the site to see how they're going to screen this, or what materials they're going to be proposing?
I'm, I'm looking for more landscape detail.
Right.
And sightline information. The lighting and stuff's not my concern, that's, that's site plan stuff. But, you know, put, I'm not asking you to design the site, but give us a little more information about, well, we're offering 100-foot setback, but it's really going to be 185-foot setback. Well, 85 feet's a big difference. And my, my biggest concern is screening between the residential property and your parking lot. The tallest, most effective screening that is possible.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Kret, so you?
Yeah, my, my concern is definitely concur with Mr. Schultz in that screening, and you talked that, well, the conifers are peaked, but if you stagger them and put two rows in, you can pretty much get a whole block. There's a way to do it with all year-round screening with vegetation.
Or possibly a row of conifers with a row of deciduous behind it, so that they're not shaded.
Yep.
You've got a pretty wide strip of grass back there to work with.
Mr. Stratt?
Yeah, the thing that, I mean, this is just the graphics, I understand, but we don't understand why you did what you did. Like you were saying, you thought there was a swale back there, there, you thought there was some power lines there. Well, show it to us. Let's see what you got there, and the rationale as to how you're solving the problem.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, you know, you should know.
That's what we like to do.
You can read right between the lines of what we're saying here. I think that we need some reassurances, that's all. And when you're talking about dimensions, I mean, put some dimensions down, put some dimensions from where the four-story is instead of the pool. You know, so that we know what's going on. And if you can, push it further away from the back. If you can, stick it closer to Stevenson.
Has Marriott seen this site plan?
No, I don't believe they have. Well, no, yeah, they have, they have.
Have they seen any other site plan configurations?
No, just this one.
Have you considered any other site plan configurations?
Well, the only viable alternatives would be to actually, Marriott would probably want it pushed back to get more parking in front of the hotel. That's why we've actually pushed the hotels as far forward as we can to still get two rows of parking and a drive lane to be able to get around the hotels.
Let me just plant the seed that you might want to look at rotating those buildings both 90 degrees, so that the windows are either looking north or south, the majority of the windows. There's very few windows on the end units, at least in the Towne Place Suite model. I'm not sure about the other model. That would give Marriott plenty of parking in front of both of those buildings and may, may find some common ground here with the concerns that you've heard tonight from, from the privacy issues.
We'll certainly look at that.
Okay. All right. So, you guys know what we're looking for? And we've come up with a date certain when you think you can be, get this back to the city, and in and within 30 days, we'll have another go at it.
Well, I guess I just need to know what the process is from the city's standpoint. Do we have to have a 30-day window in between when we get it to you and when the?
I believe so, is that correct, Brent?
We need that for the initial, we need that 30-day window for the initial application because we're, we're working on this. I mean, I, this is where it would be good if Ben and I were sitting next to each other, so we weren't conversing across the room here.
I think to me, we would need time to review it, obviously. Part of it also is if a site of, actually, an actual approvable site plan is a condition, we're going to need more time than if it was just more a list of conditions. So I think two weeks from, we need the plans to be in two weeks from now in order for us to review and have a memo completed for the next planning commission in a month.
I don't know, is that doable?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so it'll be the second meeting in September, then?
A meeting in August.
I'm sorry, yeah, August. Don't want to rush things, sir.
Summer's almost over, but not that far.
All right, any other discussion? Thank you. Look forward to your, the next meeting.
Thank you.
All right. All right, almost wrapped up, gentlemen. Number 11, public comment for items that are on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that hasn't spoken that would like to speak on an item that was on the agenda? All right, see, no one?
No second chance. I'll make it one minute.
I'll give you one minute, sir, and I'm watching the clock.
A lot of talk about site setbacks, of course, you know, there's huge parking lot back there, so I hope you would keep that in mind. The other thing is, there's a lot of vacant office property right on that corner. You know, the bank got rid of its training center there, vacant for quite a while, several years, now occupied. Right across the street, Valio, I believe it is, I think it's a credit card operation, well, whatever. That building was vacant, it's fairly new, but it was vacant for quite a while before it was occupied. I guess the residents don't understand why this building can't get occupied office, that's all.
Well, let me just comment, because I heard several residents come up and ask, why not this site, why not that site? That's not our purview. We can't tell a developer, go buy this piece of property. We assume they've done their homework, and that they're not going to spend millions of dollars and have a bad site. If this is the site they choose, then we.
Their property.
It's, yeah, and that's all we can act on. So we can't answer the question, why not this other site, or why did they pick this site? So, thank you.
It's just a question of people versus revenue. Understand.
Chairman? Mr. Stratt?
We just want to let you know that we listened to what you said. We're equally concerned about every aspect that you mentioned, and we're trying to do the best we can. But I really sympathize, and I really appreciate where you're coming from, and I've listened to you. So a decision is not easy. Sitting up here is not an easy task sometimes, so we're going to do what best we can, that's all.
All right, item number 11, or number 12, planning commission comments. Mr. Savinat, we'll start with you tonight.
Good work to the planning commission, Laurie, on moving in, Kathy, on shifting over in 15 minutes.
Yeah.
We started at 7:15, that's pretty good. Thank you. And thanks, thank you for your patience, for those of you who are in the audience.
Any comments?
Again, just thank you all for moving in here, I think it's much better, but also, I'm happy to report that Mrs. Lancaster is back to work, so she will probably be at the next meeting.
Sorry, sorry to see.
Although I've enjoyed being with you.
Mr. Edmonds?
I will miss you too, Laurie. No, you're welcome.
Mr. Kippen?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment again to the community as a whole. We really do appreciate, and we want, we do our best to listen to the comments that you make here, but, you know, in some, some degree, we have flexibility, and in other degrees, we don't. So we do, you know, if you don't bring your comments, we can't act on them, so we do appreciate you all coming out and communicating to us, and also to your neighbors and stuff, because these are crucial things when developments occur.
So, Mr. Stratt?
Okay.
Mr. Schultz, and welcome back.
Thank you. The only comment I have is if you ever have the opportunity to travel to Russia, take it. I was there for 17 days, and it is absolutely beautiful. Glad to be back.
Mr. Sanzika?
I don't have any comments.
Mr. Carroll? Kathy?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, I have no comments, it's been a long evening, thank you for your patience.